Excuse me, we're going to reopen the Board of Supervisors meeting at this time. I think we have all of our board members back present, so thank you. If you will have a seat, we would appreciate it. And at this time, we will turn the meeting over to our county administrator for her reports.
Yes, um, yes, there is just a few items underneath the county administrator's report tonight. One of the first items, again, we are very pleased always to bring back to the board and the citizens, our achievements that we do as a body of employees to bring back to you. Suri County has for the 10th consecutive year been awarded from the Governors Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting. And that is for the county's annual comprehensive financial report. So Ms. Swindell is not here, but we do want to thank her for her diligence in working with the county and all the departments who play a role in making sure that the county does receive that certificate year after year. That is not a small feat to do, so we are very proud again that for the 10th consecutive year, board members and citizens that we have received that achievement award. And the second item is something that I know that our citizens are delighted to get an update on, and I'm going to have Mr. Harrison to come forth, and he's going to provide an update on the Suri Marketplace initiative. Yes, Ms. Harrison?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Ms. Rollins, all board members assembled. I will give a brief update on the Local Market Project. We did post an update or a press release on the county's website, and I believe one was also advertised in the Suri Sussex Dispatch. But I will give about six highlights from that press release, kind of outlining where we are to date with the Local Market Project. One, Suri County's investment into the Local Market Project has been made through the purchasing of refrigeration in the amount of $300,000. The refrigeration is scheduled to arrive at the Local Market no later than November 2022, and that was executed by the county's Economic Development Authority. Contractors have obtained a demolition permit for the interior demolition of the Local Market. Project managers and contractors have submitted a proposed final interior layout drawing for review and approval. The final layout will be submitted to the building official for reviews and approval along with the building permit application. So, um, an application will be submitted to the building official for the building permit. Once a permit has been issued, construction of the interior buildout of the Local Market will commence. And lastly, the Suri Market Local Place, I'm sorry, Suri Marketplace Local Market is scheduled to open no later than spring of 2023. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Harrison, for that update. And the next item that we have is just a couple of events that are going on in the community, and we are very excited to be able to bring these things and give our citizens things to do as we are approaching the fall weather. We are always excited about our homecoming parade, and that's going to be on next Friday, October the 14th, and that, of course, is at 3 o'clock, and I think we have some board members who are going to be participating in that exciting time for Suri County. We are always very excited for homecoming, and we're going to be praying for some excellent weather. Also, on the 22nd of October, we have a Suri County Annual Diabetes Walk, and that's going to take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and that's going to be at the Suri County Parks and Recreation Center. So there's an opportunity to come out, get some exercise, and learn more about diabetes prevention and take advantage of those things that's going to be offered at that diabetes walk at Parks and Rec on the 22nd. And at the end of October, we have our Suri County Trunk or Treat that's sponsored by Suri County Sheriff's Office, and that's going to be from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And if you have not had an opportunity to go to that event, board members and others, you are missing a treat because they put on an excellent production for the kids here in Suri County. So we are very excited about that. So that's what's going on in October, and we are always looking forward to planning additional events as we approach our holiday season, and again, having those community activities for our citizens. That concludes my report on tonight, and we'll have additional things to follow up, exciting things in November, as we do have a lot of projects and things that are going on in the county. So those things are moving ahead, and we'll report on those things in November. That concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Rollins from the board members about the events and things in her comments? All right, at this time, it is public comment period, and we would ask you to come up, give your name, and I hope you've signed.
Yes, I do have some.
We have your sign up here, so your name will be called, and you will come up, and you have three minutes, give your name, though it's still, and your district, please. Thank you.
All right then, I know these citizens are anxiously awaiting, so come on up, Mr. Steph and Ms. Gideon, Giddon. I apologize, Ms. Giddon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, the county attorney, and my good friend David Harrison. You know, I made him what he is today.
All righty.
So if he's doing something good, it's because of me.
Because of you.
It's always good to see you, Madam Chair.
It's always good to see you also.
You're doing just a good job, and you know, I've worked in Chesapeake County for 26 years as a deputy county administrator, so I can understand what you all go through, and good citizen engagement is always good. It's good for the soul. And it doesn't mean that everybody has to agree with everyone, but just to have an opportunity to come up and share your thoughts is really good. I'm here for a real pleasant reason. I am on the board of directors of the 4H Center in Wakefield, that little county that you all helped make some years ago when you split off Suri into Sussex, but you all gave us a lot of wetlands, so I couldn't understand that part of it. But one of the directors left, and so the board asked me to step into the gap and run the facility till they hired someone. So I'm pleased tonight to present to some of you and introduce others, Dr. Kathy Giddon from Florida, who is going to come up and share some things with you about what her directions are and to thank you for all of the support you've given over the years.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors for Suri County. I have just moved here a week ago. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Kathy Giddon, Wakefield, Sussex County, 4H Airfield Center. So I, yeah, I love swamps and wetlands despite what Pete just said, and I have spent 27 years working for the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and so I have dedicated my life and career into helping to take care of and conserve our natural resources. And so I was really honored and excited when the Airfield 4H Center selected me as their next director. And then I saw on some of your strategies for Suri County that actually wanting to help protect the agriculture and the environment for the quality of life here in this part of southeast Virginia fits right into what some of my plans are for the Airfield Center, which actually serves Suri County. And so in case you didn't know, right, our 4H Extension Agent, LaSonia White, has joined us this evening to give me some support, and I will be supporting her in her endeavors as we bring more youth out to the Airfield Center. And we actually employ two of your residents. Ms. Crystal Deborah Jones is a chef who is part-time at Airfield in our kitchen, and Jasmine Clary was there as summer staff and stayed on to help as sort of a jack of all trades, and both of those young ladies, and soon, LaSonia will also be helping me to learn as much as I can about the new 4H Extension programs. So, a little bit about what I see and what I hope you all will buy into and help us build and grow here in this part of Virginia, is, one, I'm kind of here to help rejuvenate the center. It's been kind of going downhill, it's been going through a run of directors, and everybody kept asking me, "Well, how long are you staying?" And I'm like, "Well, why do people keep asking me that? I just moved here." Like, the 26-foot moving truck brought me, my life, and my dog to Virginia, so I hope to stay. And one of the things I hope to do is to help get Suri to increase our numbers for the number of kids that we get to send to summer camp over at the Airfield Center. It's a wonderful facility, it has so much potential, and I'm excited to help that grow. And secondly, we will continue, and we have been continuing with our retreats and conference centers and the facilities that we do have. And then my big new vision for the future, which is a little different than what has been happening, is I really want to help work with our local public school systems, private schools, homeschools, youth groups, and organizations to start to develop and create some new environmental education opportunities. I built a center from the ground up in the Tampa Bay area that became very successful, and I'm looking forward to working with the local schools and our youth here in the area and really help support and get people outdoors to help create that sense of environmental stewardship. And I appreciate all of you for the support you've given to the center, and I hope that we will continue and that LaSonia will continue to have your support here in Suri County. And please, I am inviting you, I know I'm over my 30 minutes, I'm stealing 30 seconds from Pete, to personally invite each and every one of you, and including you guys too, it's a public place. Please stop by, I'd love to give you a tour, show you my new home, stop by for a meal, stop by for a visit, and we'd love to have you over at Airfield. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. And I always have a tough time with your last name.
Gerganis.
Gerganis, okay. Good evening, Sarah.
So my name's Alan Gerganis. I was actually hoping to speak when everybody was here. You know, I'm glad for all the gun stuff, I own guns and all that stuff. But when it comes to youth, why can't we come together like this? Why's it only got to be for someone, guns? I don't ever see this building packed when it comes to something dealing with our youth, to build the community up. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I agree with you.
Thank you, thank you, sir, thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Oh, okay, all right. Those are the only two requested comments.
Susan is coming.
I was kind of shocked that nobody was getting up, I'm sorry. Um, Susan Corvello, Fairmont District, again. I want to thank you very much for the update on the marketplace. I'm really sure that there's going to be some happy citizens to see that the construction's starting soon. Citizens are interested in additional details such as what is the total estimate to complete the marketplace and a schedule of inspections and milestones. For example, has there been no mention of a health inspection? Or has it been factored into the project cost? Is there going to be a community meeting in reference to the layout? The last published version was low on the market space, and it was high on dining and meeting space. A lot of people are wondering who the supplier is going to be. We're buying equipment, but nobody has said who's going to supply the products there. So there's a lot of concerns going on, who's going to manage it? There's, there've been so many ups and downs and corrections that we cannot keep up with who's in charge of what. The original budget that was presented back in November of '20 had the county paying for so many different items than what was just invoiced for the $300,000. Who's going to make up for all the items that the county was going to cover, such as the HVAC, the parking lot, the sidewalk, the point-of-sale, the deli buildout? And who's making up for all the in-kind support that was on the first budget that we saw? That included the refrigerated truck, stocking store, deli supplies, and also the deli buildout. At the beginning of the project, you submitted a very detailed information on the happenings of the grocery store. Now, however, when questions are being asked about simple items, we're not provided answers, not even when they're submitted via email. It would be helpful for everyone to have an updated progress report monthly, since it's so close to what you're saying it's going to open, when we've been waiting for over two years. And now, within a five-to-six-month period, we're being told we're going to have another opening the spring of '23. So to let the people know what is going on, a nice timeline, another budget, another... Give us something that's going to make us feel better that this is actually going to happen. Three days of a demolition and filling a dumpster, and then nothing else kind of just stalls everybody. So we really, there's lots of people that want this grocery store. And is it going to be a grocery store, or is it just a market? Because the layout you gave had four little aisles. I can't probably grocery store shop at a four-aisled grocery store. Dollar General has more food products than four aisles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Aggleston, Denver and Blackwater District. One thing's become apparent during this meeting. This board has a problem with transparency. And you also have a problem with the Virginia State Code. Hopefully, the new lawyer will rectify that, but there's some things in the past that have left a really nasty taste as far as Virginia code. Thank you.
Samantha Donnelly, Suri District. I just have a question. It's more so just making a comment about the events you listed off. I think they're great events, homecoming, trunk-or-treat, diabetes walk. They're all wonderful events that I think help our community. But I do have a question for the board. Are children prohibited from these events? I'm assuming not, assuming they're encouraged to go. If they are in fact allowed to participate in those events, which we know they are, adoption of this, of the ordinance previously discussed does and will affect the protection of our children, and that's the firearms ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Keller, Suri District. So you guys were saying that you don't want to take away our rights for our guns, that you want us to be able to protect our children, protect ourselves, and that you're just trying to protect the people in the government center. While we can understand your points about, you know, someone coming in belligerent with a gun on their hip in the government center, you guys being afraid, you know, sure, that's understandable. But that's not the only thing listed in this ordinance. You're listing the recreation center. So I may take my child into karate or, you know, whatever event is in the recreation building, and now I am forced to leave my gun locked in my car, and I'm vulnerable in the parking lot when I'm walking alone with my child into that recreation building. I'm vulnerable now in the recreation building. So when you guys were saying that, oh, it only applies to protecting the people in the government center, that's not true. We just want to be able to protect our children, protect ourselves, and not be disarmed on public property. So maybe propose that it only affects the government building, this government building. It already pertains to a courthouse, but leave the rec centers and the places that we go with our kids alone out of it. Have you guys ever been to the, you know, with your kids to the parks and the areas? They're deserted a lot of times. I've gone there with my kids, and nobody's around. It's just me and my kids. So I don't want to be left vulnerable there without my weapon that I'm legally allowed to carry because people in the government building are afraid. Why do people in the government buildings' comfort and fears override mine? Why are the people in the government buildings' rights more important than mine and my children and our safety? So I would ask that you all consider that. It's not right that you guys would be doing this. Thank you.
Robert Chandler, Bakers Castle District. Comment, I spent several years on the Economic Development Authority of this county. The building that we're going to call the marketplace was first proposed the first year I was on the EDA. It was never approved, never looked at, never accepted from the EDA. Now, we've got how many dollar stores in the county? We're building a brand-new one right across the street from the 7-Eleven. And what Ms. Corvello said about the layout of that facility, it's not a grocery store. Like she said, there's only four aisles for food, stuff. Excuse me. There's a large area with tables and chairs for people to go in and eat. I don't think that's a marketplace. We need to reconsider what we're doing there, if it's going to help the people, especially with what's happened in the last three years in this county with other stores opening. Now, we've needed it, let's make it a store. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have any, none of them signed.
Oh, okay. At this time, we have no other signed responders or persons who want to speak, so we will, at this time, board members, do you have any comments at this time? But we will close the public comment period at this time, and now we will have board comments. Board comments?
Sorry, I'll make a real quick comment. I, I'm sorry that the majority of the folks have left, understandable. I would like to thank those who stayed, and if you know those who were here earlier, I thank you all for each and every one of your comments, and especially the one from, excuse me, Carol Marsh, who works in this building and that, and has some concern about not being able to bring her own weapon in this building. I understand that, and I get that. But again, I'd like to thank you all, thank you all for your support. Just continue to please come to this meetings, ask your neighbors, friends, family to start attending these meetings. Without you, we've said this many times, without you, we feel like we're not getting support, and we're sitting up here. And again, thank you for all your comments and attending this tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Any other?
Madam Chair, thank you. I want to, I want to thank all of the citizens who were, who came up and expressed their concerns, who were respectful to us and respectful of your opinions as well. Appreciate your, even though we may agree to disagree on certain things, but that doesn't mean we can't move forward as a county and as citizens, okay? So I just want to thank all of, all of you for your support and all of you for expressing your opinion on the matter.
Thank you, Ms. Girdan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say ditto to my fellow board members' comments. And I'd like the citizens to know that this is not always an easy chair to sit in when you're trying to make decisions for the betterment of everyone. Sometimes we're just going to have to agree to disagree, but you'd use your wisdom and the best knowledge that you have that you're going to keep your people safe as possible. Sometimes it will infringe on some of the things you're accustomed to, but I believe that we've taken everybody's point and position in consideration. I just heard the young lady speak about her kids outside of the rec center. Again, we are not trying to prevent anybody from being able to protect themselves inside the rec center. Out, excuse me, outside of the rec center, in the park area, any of that. The bill, the ordinance has been streamlined to include just inside of certain buildings in the county. Again, sometimes it's hard decisions, but it only takes one person to come in and shoot someone, and then we'll be sitting up here at the board wondering why we didn't do what we were supposed to do. Again, you may disagree, but a lot, these are things that you take in consideration when you're making decisions such as this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, Ms. Girdan?
Thank you, Mrs. Little, but I'm, I'm good. I've said what I need to say, and thank you all again for coming.
Thank you. And for me, thank you for coming. Heard your comments on all our, all the comments, those that were made during the ordinance for the gun laws and those comments made about the grocery store. All comments are taken into consideration. And as has been stated, keep coming to your board members, letting us hear what you have, you know, your concerns, because if you don't show up, then we don't know what your concerns are. And I'm so happy about the 4H and what's going on there, because 4H has been a staple for me and my family over the years, and I certainly do appreciate it, and I'm glad and happy it's continued to go. Please support those events that the county that we're having during this month. And please, I think Mr. Phelps would like for me to say he needs some help with the emergency, which is open for volunteers. And so you all know Mr. Phelps, so if you can in any way help our volunteer and staff out with taking care of the citizens of Suri County, we would appreciate it. And Mr. Phelps, I've been thinking about it, I think after I retire, I will do just that. But thank you all for coming out tonight. Be safe going home, we love you all and our citizens, and we want you to be safe. Thank you. At this time... At this time, board members, if we could have a motion.
No, we don't. We don't have close session.
Madam Chair, make a motion to end this board supervisor's meeting this evening?
Until, until the...
Oh, I'm sorry, until the November meeting, and I'm sorry, I don't know that.
November 3rd.
We don't need to continue. Yeah, just, yeah, just adjourn.
Just adjourn. Go home.
It's been a long night.
Sucker.
Yes.
The 3rd of November. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.